Stand for the pledge. The pledge is to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. Welcome, welcome, welcome to our first meeting of the new year 2018. This meeting is called to order at this time. I'd just like for us to just take a moment for a moment of silence. This past week, we remembered one of our former council members, Ms. Linta Giddens, who passed in December. And she was a great council member. And we just send our condolences out to her family and just wish them the best. As we go on with our meeting, council has reviewed the agenda. And if all is well, please signify by saying aye if there are no adjustments.
Aye.
Can I shut this door?
Mr. Rico from Bates Trucking came in perfect timing. I don't know if he needs to catch his breath, but he is absolutely just a stand-up guy and always ready.
Oh, yeah.
And this is the council. And this is Rico from Bates Trucking.
Yeah, I believe I met him. I believe we have. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, council members, how are you this evening?
Very good.
I'm confused and perplexed, so forgive me, but it was four degrees last Thursday.
I know.
So I'm just trying to figure it out right now. But all in all, things are well. So we are here to just kind of wanted to get a little more engaged. I had the opportunity and pleasure to meet with Mayor Gannon. One of the things I mentioned to her was that I really felt like there should be more connectivity with the amount of time we spend in the town. We don't always hear the right way. And so sometimes the best way to hear it is from, as they say, the horse's mouth. But also, we have more to offer than just the services that we're currently providing. So we just wanted to create some dialogue and an opportunity to kind of talk about how we can build on what we currently have and get better. At the end of the day, it's Mr. Bates' goal to be the best, give you the best service. You're a neighbor. You know, we work literally in your town. And we have a lot of employees that live in this town. And so we want to make sure that we hear if there are issues or concerns. We want to hear them so we can address them, so we can fix them. And if you just want to tell us how great we are, we want to hear that too. But we also want to make sure that you guys are aware of some things that we have available in the way of marketing and connectivity with your residents. Websites, we have a recycle coordinator that we dedicate to you for you guys to use to help educate your residents on environmental stewardship and recycling and other questions that may come about. We provide a person, a point of contact to help facilitate that. I'll share with you quickly, we have a neighboring municipality that we have currently started providing some pretty detailed tonnage reports to. What they have been able to do is really identify their participation rate for recycle throughout the town based on these reports that we provide them monthly. And my recycle coordinator has kind of helped to analyze those numbers and then talk about ways of how we can kind of improve or increase the participation rate within that specific town. And that was just something that we kind of had a conversation and the town administrator says, you know, I wish we knew how many people participated. And we said, we couldn't give you an exact number, but we could definitely kind of get you close in a percentage because we can tell you what we pick up from you for trash and recycle. And at that point, it's just a process of elimination. And then we can talk to you about how to make that look better. We can talk to you about how the mix of recycle looks. If they're recycling properly, if the wrong things are going in the trash, then it's in recycle. And why would we want to do that? Well, inevitably, we want to do it to help save you money. And most people don't think of it that way, but let me try and explain, and I hope I can articulate this properly. If we can get everyone to participate in recycling 15% more, we can effectively drive down your waste collection bill by at least 15%, meaning we could start having a real conversation about going from two days a week to one day a week. Because a lot of the things that they're throwing in the trash would now be going in the recyclable bin. Our goal is that you get two times a week recycle and one time a week trash. That's our goal. We want the inverted part. We want the smaller can to be used for trash and the larger can to be used for recycle. So that's where we're pushing people. And that's what we're trying to tell people, that it can happen if the awareness is bought. If there's some connectivity, we help develop green teams within towns. Through that recycle coordinator, she kind of rallies that and meets with them and talks about things and ways that they could get, you know, the engagement. We work with local schools. We have the recycling contract for Prince George's County Schools. A lot of the kids in the community go to Prince George's County Public Schools, where we facilitate a lot of their training and activity with the children within the school system. And so we already are touching the community in an adverse way, but we can still touch them. And kids can dictate what goes on in our house. We all know that, you know, when a kid learns something, they make the whole house learn it. And so that's what we believe in recycling. So we always start at the school level. And then we try and have that matriculate to the parent. That's my spiel. You got anything for me?
We do have a volunteer here in the community that wants to work with your green team, or on the green team, that wants to work with the coordinator.
Okay.
To educate and do exactly what you said, reverse our size so that our big container is recycling and our little container is trash.
Okay.
And once a week, pick up. He helped promote it at his school system.
How aggressive do you, do you have any like really earth-conscious, environmental kind of ambassadors?
Yes.
Within the town?
The green team.
Because there was a pilot program launched by the county for composting in homes. And we would want to have them sign up for that. Yes, it's a pilot program and the county is looking to, at some point, we're far off, I'll give you that, but at some point, Prince George's County desires to have composting in the homes somewhat of a law and things that every home does. Yes, ma'am?
I'm a resident of University Park, and we have a pilot program going there, and I am in it. And it's been, I've been doing it for a couple of years now. And the town picks it up, but it is taken to a county facility.
Yes, it's taken to Western Bridge.
Right. So it's very easy to do it.
And what does that do, if you don't mind sharing? What does that do to your waste stream in your home?
It reduces it.
Dramatically. How much of your waste stream you think is food? Think about it. Now, I want you to keep in mind that everything we do in trash is about weight. So your prices are derived from weight. We base it on how much weight comes out of the town. That's how we come up with the cost. So if you reduce the weight, then what happens?
Save money. I love it.
Because we got a lot of stuff that we just want to kind of bring to the table. We're far more than just a waste collector and a recycle collector. We do a lot more. We have worked hard. We have not been perfect. I don't shy away from it. Rod will tell you that I answer the phone every time. I don't shy away from it when we don't do it right. I speak to Mayor Gannon, unfortunately, on Saturday sometimes when we don't do it right. But we work hard, and I think what we have done is we've stabilized the crews here. And I believe that you've started to get some consistency, and that's what we were looking for.
I think the biggest change, and I can say, Rico, that yes, I've told the council this before, you react whenever I contact you right away. So I know whether it's a broke-down truck or whether there's something that was missed or there's a problem with an address that just is continual, you fix it. And I think the biggest compliment is the public works crew say they don't have to follow the trucks around and pick up trash after the trucks. Where the guys are, you know, emptying and the trash goes out on the street.
You know what they hate is they hate going back.
Yeah.
And so we put a supervisor in the town on the days of collection, and the supervisor, if he sees anything, he makes the truck, no matter where they are, come back. So they could be headed to the dump, feeling good, day's done, hey, turn around, come back. You had some spillage. It's the worst feeling ever. And so what they trying to do is make sure it's absolutely spotless before they leave because they already know now, somebody's coming behind me. And it's just their accountability is a piece of it. We are in a very, very difficult industry, specifically to find very talented people. Now, I love trash industry, and I think it's a dynamic industry with tons of potential and opportunities to have a great career. Unfortunately, our younger generation doesn't really like work, specifically outdoors. You know, we averaged 30 absences last week. Thirty per day.
It wasn't even cold.
Okay. I can't choose to not make money because of the conditions outside. I'm different. I'm sorry, but you know, you got to go to work. So you bundle up, you figure it out, but what you can't do is just not show up. And I mean, you know, it's different when you get callouts. You try and plan for that. But I'm talking showing up to work and 30 people aren't there. And we figured it out. We got through it, you know, but again, that's, and then when it's nice outside, they only want to work a few days because they just need enough money to do what they want to do. And then once they get it, they don't need to come to work anymore. And they're very, very crafty and intelligent beings. Oh my, these kids are smart. They did the taxes. They figured it out, man. They know exactly how to get them their check. And so that's kind of, and once they get that, they're like, I'm good. I got it mapped out. I know exactly what I'm doing this weekend. I got the check to do it, and I'm not coming back to work. And so that's what we deal with. So what we have done is we've created bridge programs for our employees. So if you come in as a helper, we give you access to a free CDL class where we will train you to get your CDL. And then we give you a bridge training to get to become a driver from a helper. If you're already a driver, we give you management training to bridge you from being a driver to a manager. And so we're always trying to build it from within. We do a huge graduation ceremony. Ike Leggett actually came and spoke at the last one that just happened a few weeks ago. So we take it very serious and we mean it when we do it. And so it's something that we, you know, believe in. If you have residents who are looking for employment and they're young and they're healthy, send them to us. We have opportunities for them. They can start there, but they don't have to end there. They can start on the back of the truck. I started on the back of the truck. I'm general manager. I figured out real quick, first where I jumped on my chest, I realized I didn't want to do that forever. Real easy for me. Once I figured that out, I decided that I wanted to create a different path for myself. So worked hard, went to school, started learning some stuff, and got into some really smart people. And, you know, ended up falling in love with the industry. But, you know, I'm trying to create that opportunity for others, and we'd love to partner with our communities that we work in to help provide some employment. So we're always looking for that. And I'd like to connect, I think our marketing team, that specialist that does the recycling, I'd love to connect with the town in some way, that when we have openings, that maybe you guys could post them for us.
Yeah, we sent out an email.
So that the opportunities could.
We sent out an email last week.
Okay.
We can do that very easily.
We would definitely like to partner with you in that regard. We'd love to hire local employees.
Two comments. One, I called today to the hotline to get information about Christmas trees. And since we're on the air, they indicated that you will pick them up at Yard Waste Day, which is Wednesday at the curb.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
So I just wanted to say that while everybody could hear it. The other thing, I want to thank you. You are, Bates Trucking is a major supporter of Port Town's Day every year, and we thank you very much for that. You help Bladensburg, Cottage City, Comer Manor, and Edmiston with that event. And you also help us with Edmiston Day and National Night Out. So we thank you.
And we'll continue to do that. And if there's other opportunities for us to partner and support, just let us know. If we can, we will. I don't know if you guys, we do all kinds of stuff, touch a truck events. We do, we do a lot of stuff. We have a show truck. You guys should come and see it. It's actually pretty phenomenal. It's got green lights on the bottom. Unbelievable system. So we got some nice stuff. But one of the other things that we'd like to offer is we have a really nice facility that Mr. Bates has finally been able to build. And so we'd like to, you know, once a year, we try and host a municipality meeting where we bring in mayors and town administrators and council members from all over, all of our customers. We bring them into our huge conference from the training facility, and we just talk about where we are, what we're doing. But we really create it as a think tank for municipalities to share best practices and share ideas and just kind of bounce that around. And we share things that we see coming that will affect you, positively or negatively. So what is the next one? Mr. Bates normally does it in the second quarter. The date hasn't been confirmed, but you'll get a personal invitation, the mayor's getting a personal invitation for Mr. Bates, to just come and we treat you to lunch. And we just kind of want to say thank you for being partners and talk about how we can be better.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It's dead boring in the room. The only problem that me and my residents experience with your service, we love your service experience. The only problem we experience with your services, your guys, when they empty it, they don't put the totters back up on the curb.
Okay.
They put it in the street or a blocked driveway. One time Bates brought down $150 for my car lanes, just for a piece of plastic.
Right.
And that was, that could have been avoided. That's, and that still exists today. That was like eight years ago. That's the problem that still exists.
Well, you know what? It's a problem that we'll continue to fight, but I really appreciate you telling me.
Yeah, that's what we're back.
Because, man, you have no idea how many people I'm going to beat up tomorrow when they start their ride. So I thank you for that. No, I'm genuinely serious. It's something we fight. It's the most inconsistent part of what we do is getting them to remember can placement's important because they get in this mode where they want to get finished so fast that they get sloppy. And they just, they just start throwing them, and they're running, and the driver is not even stopping the truck. I followed a truck yesterday, driver never stopped.
Wow.
Guy's tongues are hanging out. I'm like, really, dude? You're not going to stop the truck and just let them get the can? They're throwing the cans at the truck because the truck won't stop. And so it sounds like, yeah, we got finished in three hours, but look at the disaster behind you. And so it's always something that we, we have tailgates three times a week where we meet with the guys in the morning before they go out, and we just do these repeated reminders, can placement's important. So now that I know that, so.
And if it starts raining, if it's in the.
It's going to rain tomorrow.
If it's raining, it clogs it up. But if it's in the driveway apron or the street, somebody's got to park their car.
So preference purposes, just so I'm clear, we want them on the curb.
Yeah.
On the curb, not against the curb.
Right.
Because we have different.
Not the driveways.
Right. Driveways are no-go. So driveways aren't accepted in any area that we service. As a matter of fact, this happens to be Mr. Bates' pet peeve. When he sees a can blocking his driveway, he goes bananas because there's nothing worse than coming home from a long day's work, and you got to get out your car to move your can to put your car or your truck in your driveway. I can't stand it. So I understand it. But one of the things that we struggle with is I have some townships that don't want the cans on the curb, but they want them against the curb because they don't want the grass to die. We get all kinds of requests. So now that we know, and am I safe to say that, that's collectively in the town, that you would rather have them on the curbs and not against the curb?
Oh, I think everyone would like to, yes.
Okay. That's all we need to know because there's a neighboring municipality that that's the golden rule. If you go through there and there's trash there, you'll see all cans up on the curbs, like little soldiers uniformly set on the street because that's what the customer asks for. So we set the standard.
Have the space.
And so we'll set the standard. I'll make sure that that standard is set. When I leave here, I'm going to actually contact the crew. I'm going to wake them up. I'm going to make sure they know that I just got talked about with your can placement. So guess what better not happen tomorrow? Anything else?
None.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say, I've been out of work, you know, for 102 years. And every time you guys come by, I've always been polite, cheerful, and like you say, I've seen you drop some trash. Each and every move, making all that, make sure, look around. You guys do a good job.
Oh, thank you, sir. You know, I felt good coming here because actually, actually, one of my best crews are here. I cheated a little bit, but I accept invitations where I think I may be successful. I'm not shameful of that. But I did want to make sure that our guys here, they believe that they're a part of your town. They take it to heart. When the snow came last week and we were struggling because we had just a nightmare on Thursday because we just couldn't move around specifically in these types of municipalities with the narrow streets, you just couldn't put a truck on ice. That was like a bad idea. And so we had to start considering sliding some stuff. And the crew just went bananas, said, we cannot slide Edmiston. And I said, listen, I've talked to them. We're going to go to them. We're going to go on Saturday. And they were here at 6:30 on Saturday morning. It was three degrees.
It was cold.
You said they take it to heart, sign outside, says Edmiston has a market.
Yeah, so they do. That's good because, I mean, they do. They believe they're a part of the town. So they don't even let, they don't let themselves take vacations at the same time. Self-management, I love it. Like they plan it so somebody from the crew's here. So that's a good crew. And that's why we have them in our municipalities because municipalities are very near and dear to Mr. Bates. That's where he started. His first contract was in municipality. So he believes they come first.
Good.
Anything else?
How did we get? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Sophia.
Oh, well, I'm happy to hear about University Park and the composting. And I think residents probably would really like to learn more about it. I think we really would like to, the council, Mr. Barnes.
The green team's done a lot of work on that.
Yeah, but really promote it.
No, I mean, they've done a lot of work, so they have a lot of background.
Yes.
And they could absolutely take it the next step. They've kind of held off on it because priorities, they just had other things to get done first. But they definitely want to promote it.
Yeah.
And they've had presentations from the folks that did that project, that started it. And they've had folks from private business that go around and collect compost waste.
Yeah, and to really stress because, as you said, it's all based on money. And the weight determines how much we pay. And everybody wants to save money. So that's definitely a point that really needs to be stressed.
If you can do that and help your environment.
Yeah.
It's a win-win.
It's a win-win.
So that's what you're looking for.
So.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, related, I had a question about doing these tonnage reports because I feel like getting a baseline of like where we are would be useful.
We can, again, I would coordinate that with.
I mean, I can get more specific, but they give that to me every year on what they estimate the recycling that's collected here versus the tonnage that's collected.
You said you could do it monthly, though, right?
We could do it monthly. We just need to coordinate that with Rod so I could get Tara to contact you and we can talk about what that looks like.
Yeah, we do it annually because we do it for an annual report, but.
Okay.
Yeah, monthly.
Yeah, I just think seeing that in black and white, like how much waste we produce would be maybe behavior-changing.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Yeah.
Hopefully. That's the goal.
And that was the issue before when we were talking about going to one-day trash service. It was important to me for us to have education because we needed to educate our residents before we even thought about going to one day.
Could not agree with you.
Because you cannot, everyone was going one-day trash service, and I couldn't do it because our residents would have gone into shock because just like you said.
Kind of like the whole county.
Exactly. Because it's a disaster now.
Yeah.
Because if you're not recycling like you should, then.
Now, a whole 18 months later, we've finally seen the trends in the county.
Kind of.
Where the recycling numbers are like popping way up. And it's because people have now accustomed themselves to the one time a week trash, but it was done completely backwards. The education came after all, the heartache and heartburn. Whereas had they done the legwork up front, it would have been a gradual transition and it probably wouldn't have hurt as bad. And I think they would have had a lot more success and a lot less, you know, heartache. Now, we have some areas in the county that I don't know how to explain it.
You want to say, go back to two days.
We go to houses and they have 15 cans, four.
Yeah.
At a house.
Rental.
Yeah. And so I don't even know how you explain that. It just, I don't know how you edu, that education to me is a little different. And so, you know, I just, I think there's always going to be those pockets or slash cases, so I don't, that shouldn't deter you. The cumulative total, I think, the right effect would happen.
Right.
And which is your trash stream is reduced, your recycling is increased, and your town is cleaner. At the end of the day, that's what you want.
Cool. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you guys having me.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go outside and figure out if it's spring or.
Whatever we're doing. You guys have a great day.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming. Very good.
You know, they should be, it's like when somebody comes.
That's very good.
That should be seen.
That actually helps us. I know we had a little tense relationship with them, but that helps when we can have a face with Bates. So our next item is the consideration of our town council minutes from the council work session. And then also with our, well, the work session from December the 5th, and then our closed session from December the 5th. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the work session and also the closed session.
Can I ask a question first? Can I ask a question first?
You absolutely can. I remember getting the minutes for the work session.
Closed session's the right underneath there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. I pulled the other one offline, so.
Is there any other questions concerning the work session or the closed session? Are there questions or concerns concerning either the work session or the closed session?
I have one.
Well, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the work session.
It'll be both of the items.
Are we doing both at the same time?
Both of the items, yes.
The work session and the closed session for December the 5th.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item is the proclamation declaring Public School Choice Week. We reviewed Public School Choice Week. It's a proclamation that will be signed declaring Public School Choice Week, the week of January 24th through the 27th, which is highlighting education from grades K through 12 in our public schools, providing public school options in education. We'll also try as a council to provide education to our parents and our residents in the town concerning education. Is there a motion to sign off on the proclamation for school, Public School Choice Week?
I make a motion to sign off on proclamation for Public School Week, Public School Choice Week.
Choice Week.
Excuse me.
Yep, thank you so much, Ms. P. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. And is there anything from our citizens? Any comments? Questions? All right. If there are none, we will be going into a closed session. At this time, I would like to have a motion to close our, if there's nothing, any comments from our council, or is there a report from our police department? I'm sorry.
We can do that if they stop calling me.
If they say, I know you've been pretty busy.
I have the totals from May through December. I gave everyone a copy. Unfortunately, before May, I have not been able to find the statistics. November was a fairly slow month. This, end of December, we had an attempted armed robbery at Crichton and Decatur Street. No money was taken, no one was injured. A gentleman produced a gun, the victim turned and ran, and everything was gone by the time we got there. We had a first-degree assault down on Ingraham Street this week. Basically, two masked men come up to a guy coming out of one of the repair shops, produce handguns, and he turned and ran, and they ran away also. Investigations, county investigations looking into both of them. The one on Ingraham Street, we think, maybe from a dispute from several months ago. The woman has actually made threats in court to the owner of the business about getting people to come mess him up, and it sort of seems rather convenient this occurred. We had one death this week over in Elizabeth Landing. And other than that, pretty much everything's quiet. I pulled the statistics for citations from 2016 and '17 for state citations and written warnings. We increased. Unfortunately, for repair orders and parking tickets, we decreased a little bit, but that's also with short. But that's also with short staff for over six months. And nothing else to report.
That death over Elizabeth Landing, was it male or female?
Male.
Do you have his name, the person's name?
I do not, I wasn't there, but I can find it out and let you know offline.
You sure it was this week, I mean, last week?
I thought it was this week, maybe last week.
It was this week, last week.
Last week, I'm sorry.
Oh. Because I remember when Don passed away, you know, it was nothing mentioned. That's why I was wondering if it was.
Yeah, it wasn't. He didn't mention it, you're right.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Is it two separate detectives from PG County?
Yeah, one would be robbery unit and one would be trying to get property.
Chief, are we taking comments for Captain Sullivan?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I called you earlier about the concerns by that full citizenship. It's become the nightmare today. It involved some serious vehicle, traffic was coming on Decatur Street trying to turn on the Taylor Road. And there was a bus that was coming up, Taylor trying to turn onto Decatur Street at a long line of traffic. The traffic on Decatur Street had to back up because that business, full citizenship, constantly violates the traffic laws. There's at the corner, it's painted yellow, and for some reason, Metro Access continually parked there. And at certain times of the day, it's becoming problematic. I've expressed concerns, it's like ten times I've expressed to Chief, sorry, to Captain Sullivan. And today it involved a school bus. So we really, I think we maybe could start ticketing the drivers or something, but something has to be done.
Okay, we.
It has to be.
Yeah, when they park off the backup. Like I spoke with you on the phone, we've tried to get down there as much as we can. I've talked to the drivers, I've talked to the people out of the business, which was a real treat. I've even gone down there as far as to the drivers that are actually obeying the law, stopping and thanking them. And telling them that they need to put the word out to the other drivers to do the same. Unfortunately, I mean, short of posting someone there, they're in and out in five or ten minutes. And I mean, I agree, it's a problem, and I try to do what I can with what I got. But I don't know what else to do, other than possibly looking into like some sort of traffic adjustment so they just physically can't park there.
Well, they should utilize that parking.
Exactly. So you can't catch them, is what it is.
I can't catch them all the time.
If you move from parking now to that parking lot, and that's all the problem.
Well, and I don't understand why you can't catch them, because they're there. It's like, every time I go, there's always a Metro Access bus parked right there, right at the corner. And they're just being lazy. And maybe if you give them a ticket, as I told you earlier, the one way to hurt them is to hurt them financially. Eventually, when they get two or three tickets, they have to pay. They're gonna, they're gonna, you know, decide, okay.
One ticket to go.
You know, but something can be done.
Somehow get their.
Metro Access, that's mostly Metro Access.
Right, if we get their tag number, maybe.
And give them a ticket.
And call Metro Access.
Well, that's the problem there, there's not just one location. Because I've talked to the drivers, I mean, I've been doing this for a while with them. And they're like, well, we go out of this place, but this one comes out of this place. So I can't even, like I explained, I can't even get an address to mail a letter to because I don't know which one they're coming at.
Coming out, I don't know.
So, and that's a problem. I mean, I'll start issuing more and more tickets and, you know, trying to deal with them more, but.
Well, can a warning be given to that actual facility?
They have been.
I was going to say, different ones, different ones many times.
Who will in turn will have to enforce the, enforce it with Metro Access?
They've been warned about the problem numerous times. They usually come out and yell and curse at us when we're out there writing parking tickets.
But who cares?
Oh, I agree.
They're breaking the law.
Yeah. But they care, and they don't seem to, I mean, they, other than putting a sign up to the post, the no parking post one time, telling them to park behind the post. They just don't care.
The only other thing I would think of is if they're, if it's Metro Access, and if they have someone with a disability. Going to the parking lot would be an issue. And that would be the only reason they would pull up to the front.
If they're not accessible, that probably has to be.
It is accessible, it is accessible, there's a ramp. Yeah, there's, yeah.
Oh, does it have an elevator?
Yeah, they're just being lazy. It's just easier for them to pull up and park.
And they just don't want to park that one truck length distance.
Yeah, because sometimes they'll park on the driveway of the pumping station, and they wait.
Somehow or another, make that facility liable.
Yeah.
Because they need to.
Because they involve a school bus.
Yeah, you have to make that.
They're backing up.
That transportation.
I've told them that if one of their clients get, that truck gets hit while they're loading or unloading, that their client's going to get injured, and that could cause them problems. They really didn't seem to care all that, but I'll turn the heat up some more.
Do you know who the owner of the facility is?
I'm sorry?
Do you know who the owner of the facility is?
I can find it out, I know the top guy.
Well, I said, you know.
Yeah, the lady that is there, Panzi.
Yeah, they probably need to address, I'm disgusted. But I would address her. I mean, if she's the owner, gentleman, whatever she is.
She's the manager, it's a nonprofit organization, so it's got a.
Whatever she is, I would, I would address her.
It operates by board.
Yeah.
Maybe we could send a letter as Captain Sullivan suggested from Mayor and Council, warn them, warn them. And after they've been warned, let them know we're gonna enforce.
Enforcement.
Maybe we could do the same thing to Metro Access.
Yeah, both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other one's violating it.
And Metro Access, they've got like a headquarters in Montgomery County. Because I've had to call and complain, because my mother uses Metro Access. So I'll try and find out, but I do know there's information, because I was able to reach them to express my concerns.
There would be a headquarters for.
Yeah. I think it's somewhere in Silver Spring. Yeah.
Yeah, I was hoping to type a letter and take it to the individual place and pay, let me put this on your bulletin board and let you, you know, be aware. But when they're coming from so many different places, it's sort of hard to do.
But Panzi, I can give you her number.
Place, she's, yeah.
Because it's just a matter of time today, I said, it will have a school bus with children.
Or one of the clients.
Yeah, and then people have to back up on Decatur Street. It's crazy.
Metro Access has contractors that.
They do.
So you can find out who the contractor, these are bringing people to a medical facility or some kind of.
It's a work facility for handicapped or disabled.
So they're working for Metro, though, right? No?
Well.
Who are they working for?
The bus brings the, brings the.
Somebody's paying Metro, somebody's paying Metro.
Yes, yes.
Who is that, Metro?
That could be full citizenship.
It's probably full, yeah.
Or.
Okay.
Yeah, or insurance.
That's where you go, and you give them, we're giving you notice right now, if something happens out there, you're already on notice.
Because it's full citizenship clients that are being brought there.
Yeah, so you need whoever's in charge of full citizenship is who we need to go to, that's who we need.
So can we send a letter, can we work on that?
And put them on notice, that, you know, if we're going to hold them liable because they're creating a traffic hazard.
And this has been going off years.
Mm-hmm, I know.
Generally speaking, if you go high enough up, you know.
You know, they tried to buy the adjacent property to expand their parking so that they could correct it somewhat, I think. And they weren't successful.
But also, Metro Access, I thought, was a contractor that Metro paid as the alternative for people who, for ADA compliance. And so you'd go to them too.
Right.
To Metro and say, you know, your contractor's not behaving. Those are the two places to go.
I will look into that and see what I can find out.
Aren't they based right up there by PG Plaza in the White Village, Metro Access?
I don't know.
I think, I think they are.
I think we can find it.
Yeah, I think they are.
I like what Mr. Crutch just said, put a sign for tow away zone, is that an option?
I'm sorry, for what?
Tow away zone.
Is it, is it right away?
Or maybe double, or double define or something.
It's hard to tell something if somebody's in a vehicle.
Yeah, that's true.
Or maybe it's like double define, like in some school districts, there's a double fine when you violate.
That would be for you all to do.
Is it on right away? Is it on right away?
Yeah, they're right off the stop sign.
And where they're parking, though, is that on right away?
It's in the street.
Yeah, yeah.
It's up against the car.
Right there at the corner, yeah.
So you're in, you're right away. Start putting up bollards, you know, or something, to get in their way.
That's what I was thinking, flower pot, something, but that's still not going to help with the cars coming around the corner, because it'll still be tight on.
But they have to make the right turn.
I can't visualize this, but in terms of.
As you go over the bridge, it's the first right after you cross the bridge.
Okay. Just to keep people from parking in certain places if it's causing a problem, and it's in your right of way, you can control that.
But it's painted yellow.
Yeah.
Well, clearly, they're.
Oh, well, that's fine.
They're saying, yeah, it's a double, double define and ticket them. And they're so comfortable now, now that they put up cones. So they put up cones in the no parking area, so yes. It's just, yeah, so it's like, yeah. Yeah, right.
They, they're like, CMP, I'm old, but they put cones out at their vehicles so they don't get hit.
Right.
They don't want to get hit.
Well, it's a, it's a standard procedure.
No matter where they're parked.
That's just like if, if a cable guy comes over in my neighborhood, they park their truck, they put a cone.
Regardless, it's a public nuisance, and today was.
Well, that particular, this particular, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, before we say, we should have done something before.
So it's noted. Move on that.
Yeah.
Strongly worded letter.
Yes.
Yes, so Mr. Barnes just passed out the code enforcement officer's notes. You want to highlight anything?
Just, she's completing up her inspections at Fountain Park in the next two weeks. She has three buildings she hasn't inspected yet, and then she's going back for re-inspections, working with Stephanie, the manager there, on that. She's trying to get, Sophia, she's still having difficulty getting the owner's name for that house on Hamilton. She's reached out to Donata and.
And still, really?
Yeah, and Donata was going to forward Nicole's information to the owner and have him call, but.
The guy next door to that property is Mr. Call, and he's good friends with him.
Right, she's reached out to him, we know him well, and so she, and she went to the neighbor across the street, and none of them want to give, or they don't, can't find the direct information.
Convenient to you.
Exactly, yeah. And so, you know, we'll tell, we'll tell him to contact you. But we have a, you know, we have, over the years, we've had lots of correspondence with that person. We just, the files are all gone, and so unfortunately, we're trying to recreate here. And so she's working on it, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks here, we'll have that all resolved. And she's working on dead trees throughout the areas. She's letting property owners know about their responsibilities as far as the trees are concerned. And on fences, we actually solved a problem at the corner of Forty-seventh and Hamilton with a lady and her fence post. You can't just have fence posts, you got to have a fence, so.
Yeah, I want to, I want to discuss that too, because, but I'll do that in a private segment, yeah.
Any questions?
Cool.
Captain, if you could, when you get in the updates on what the status of those two investigations are for the two violent crimes.
Okay.
I think we probably would all.
For the what?
Appreciate a.
Hmm? The two attempted.
For the two violent crimes. Just so you know, because that, and you might get updates before I think Council made it right, so.
I have a couple of other items I sent out to you. WSSC, intergovernmental relations, Karen Riley sent out this week. A really good information, we're going to try to figure out a way to get it out to the residents about the water main breaks. We had three on Emerson, we had one on Buchanan, we had one on Fifty-first, we had one on Forty-seventh, one on Forty-ninth. They don't respond immediately. The water flows, they evaluate based on where it's located, safety, number of customers affected, the impact to the roadway. They might, when it's really cold, they'll send salt trucks to sand and salt until they can get to it. But they've had three hundred water main breaks since the start of the year. They anticipate usually from November to February dealing with eighteen hundred water main breaks. So they really work hard at trying to get it fixed when it comes up on the list, but sometimes it takes a little while. We did have a problem with a sinkhole on Emerson, and a car went into it and got towed. So it's a, it's, you know, when the water mains break, that's why we're getting them all replaced, I hope, next year in their replacement program. But even then, as the freezing and thawing occurs, the ground shifts, you still can have them break. So we'll try to get this out, I hope you read it, because it was really good information on that particular item. Your computers, if you haven't got your computers all set up, please bring them in, and we can set up a day when the computer technician comes in and gets it. We're having a, I know a problem here with Wi-Fi tonight, so there must be something going on with the, with the system. And so let me know.
So what are you supposed to come with?
Well, I haven't set it up yet, let me know when it's convenient, if you want to drop them off and leave them, or if you want them to try to come to the next work session.
Why don't you just set it up and then let us know what he wants to do?
All right.
Whether he wants to just come in here and see if it's something here, or if he wants our computers, or sheet.
Okay.
Whatever it is.
And last, if you haven't turned in the houses that you'd like to see win the Christmas yard decorating contest, please do so. I sent out some pictures.
Yeah, those pictures, the ones, they, myself, I could judge just from those pictures.
I have more, I just, I just don't want to send back.
No, just those, those particular ones.
We had over, we had over sixty homes decorated, so it was, it was pretty phenomenal. And then at the apartments, we had, how many?
Three.
Three winners.
Only three winners, like, it was about. About twenty-five people, actually.
So it's really caught on as a program, and it's really fun. The other thing that I just wanted to say, thanks to Council and Sarah, Mr. Johnson, and Sophia, and the mayor, for the Adopt a Child event and program. It was phenomenal, we adopted thirty-two children through businesses and individuals, and provided them with Christmas. And then they got to be here the night the Santa arrived on the fire truck. So they had a really exciting event, and I think it was another great success for Christmas in Edmiston, as we helped, helped those families with that.
And the coat donation.
And we had wonderful coat donation from one of our residents. You know, we have such wonderful, generous, helpful, we had a resident that, I mean, a business that provided us money to help with the utility bill again this year. We probably had twelve businesses that gave in one way or the other. That'll be coming out in the list.
When, are you collecting coats now?
No, no, we had a resident donate a bunch of new coats that we are going to give out to the children.
Oh, I didn't see.
They fill up the back of a truck. Just kidding. Give it a hot coat.
They donated brand-new coats.
And then the last, we're on our last customer for our weatherization grant. We've helped nine homes with upgrades to their heating and air conditioning, insulation, water heaters, some appliances. So it's been a really great program, we're on the downhill slide of that. Council member Bennett White was one of the recipients of that.
Mine went out three times.
Yours what?
They had to come back three times and repair it. I don't even know what was going on. It kept going off, coming on, going off, but he finally figured out, I think when they installed it, somebody dropped a nail or something down.
Well, good.
Nobody could figure out what it was. But it works perfectly, yes.
Good.
Cool, yes.
Absolutely crazy.
The benefits of living in a municipality, you can't get that anywhere.
We're going to do another Christmas book with all of the events, because when it starts in Thanksgiving with the basket distribution that you did, and then moves to the lighting of the Christmas tree in the park, and the volunteer appreciation luncheon, and the, and the Christmas party, and the Santa on the fire truck, and the adopt a child. and the, and the Christmas party, and the Santa on the fire truck, and the adopted child. It's a lot of activities and a lot of wonderful, um, benefits to the residents, so. Really good, good season.
Very good. Last night I was talking to, um, so it was the opening session last night, and, um, I was talking to one of the legislators, and, um, they were asking about Edmiston, and they were asking where it was located. And, um, they knew College Park and Green Bell. And I said, well, let me tell you about Edmiston. And by the time I finished naming everything about Edmiston, they said, wow, you're doing all of that? And I said, yes, we are. He said, fifteen hundred? Fifteen hundred.
We are-
Could take a few.
We are planning a port town script to the legislature. Um, we are working with the, uh, days, we'll send out several days, and the bus from here in the port towns. We'll take all the, all the town elected officials that want to go, and they'll go up and spend the day with the, um, elected officials that came out of the port town legislative process this year-
Mm-hmm.
-as a suggestion to do. And so, um, Debbie Sandlin is coordinating that, and sent out today to, uh, to me about that. So, um, we'll be getting some dates out to you. Hopefully, there'll be a date that you, a lot of you can take the bus and-
Cause we really wanna be a voice, we wanna be seen, we wanna be strong there. You remember, Joanne Benson wants us to be there, that's for sure. We wanna, we wanna be there. And, um, uh, yesterday, we're gonna push a PSA, they did two PSAs actually, on, um, uh, H U R, to really explain what highway user revenue is, and how important it is to all the municipalities. Uh, because we need them to do something about giving us back what they took from us all those years ago. Um, change the formula, I don't care what they do, but we have to be so creative in order to pave our roads or to fill a pothole. Um, we have holes all over the place, and our residents really don't understand that we're not getting the money that we used to get. So we have a huge campaign that we're trying to push, um, for them to really give us back that money for highway user revenue. So the PSAs are going, we're trying to push it on TV if we can, the news, somebody, um, to do it, so. Uh, we gotta get down there to start talking to our legislators. So, twenty-two, yeah, they took away a lot of money, yeah. And we have to be more creative, we're going for grants and everything else, so.
How did this come to pass?
Uh, our governor, uh, kinda took it away, and, um-
In the budget process.
In the budget process, and we just never got the money back.
How long ago did that happen?
O'Malley, O'Malley.
Uh-huh.
Um, long, long time ago. And it's just, um, hard to get back. Uh, everything else gets in the way, everything is before it, everything gets in the way.
What was Edmiston's, like, typical cut of that?
We get about twelve thousand dollars.
Now we get twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Previously-
A hundred, little over a hundred thousand.
That's a significantly cut. Wow!
It's a lot of money, a lot of money.
And you said it was done on, on O'Malley?
No, no.
Oh, wow!
Former mayor, Admiral Tees was here, that was before Ken Hines was mayor.
Yeah, it was even before, yeah. It was even before, yeah.
It's been, it's been a number of years, and our, our share has stayed at that twelve thousand one hundred now for-
A whole pile of it.
Wow!
Yeah, quite a while. I mean, it, it does cover, you know, some of our street repair.
Yeah, but, huh?
Pothole repair and signs and stuff, but nothing what-
A hundred thousand dollars can do.
Nowhere near.
Exactly.
Nowhere near. So we have little stickers and things like that, and anytime we can, whenever we visit Annapolis, that's what we want to tell our legislators. Whenever you see Tawana Gaines, whenever you see Ann Healy or Alonso, or whoever's gonna win this next election, that's what you wanna say. If you see anyone else that's a delegate, senator, you see Senator Pinsky, whoever, tell them. Delegate Fennell, all of them.
Was that discussed last night? And you said you guys wouldn't do pins and you did PSA, but was any strategies?
Last night it was talk, one-on-one with all of your delegates. It was a time to mingle and-
More social.
More social. It was fantastic. It was a lot of, um, receptions in different places, um, uh, some attorneys had their open houses. It was, uh, very good, social-
Debbie's thinking with the port towns group going out, that we can break into teams and go to different, different senators and different delegates-
Go to their offices.
Lobby day.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the lobby day, and focus on the issues like H U R, and the other issues that came up at the legislative event.
So, as soon as you find them, let me know, because chances are it's gonna be a weekday, so I have to put it for you, cause I'm definitely on board, yeah, so.
Yeah, I figured you all would try to be.
Yeah, so just give me enough time for them to get to leave, yeah.
And so, yeah, that's, we're, we're thinking February.
February?
Yes, yeah. So what she's doing is contacting District Forty-seven reps to get a good dates for her, from them, and I'm getting them from the twenty-two, and so hopefully we'll be able to marry up-
Okay.
Um, between them, uh, together on a time that works for everybody. And we'll take the bus, the Comer Manor bus.
I'll reserve my comments.
Well, since you're getting ready to say something, do you have anything?
How about?
Any comments, anything?
No, I already have, I already said my comments about, yeah.
Anything, that's why.
Uh, um, I did have a question about the bus. I ju- just actually kinda went through our, our financial, um, segment. But we spent like o- over two thousand dollars for the bus.
The kids, the kids did their field trips through the bus system. We budgeted seventy-five-
So that's just now getting on, on there?
Yeah, yeah, they, they am, they budget by quarter, and it's like a quarter behind.
They invoice, but-
I mean, the invoice.
Oh, oh, by qu- oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why it was on the last?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We aren't getting much ridership.
This quarter should be nothing, right?
Correct.
Okay.
We're gonna be way under our budget, but, but, you know, we still pay.
We still have to pay?
Yeah.
How much?
Well, but it's based on our usage.
Right, so if no one uses, so-
But we still pay a, a portion, a portion of the overhead.
So what is that?
Well, we budgeted seventy-five hundred for the whole year, so we, I don't know. It, we don't know what it is until they send out the, the bill.
Yeah, that's Comer Manor that sends out the bill.
Mm-hmm. It gets split between the four towns, the overhead and the ridership, the fees that come out.
So even if we never use it, if the other port towns use it, it's based on-
They'll, they'll pay the larger share because they have the usage. It's all, that's what calculates that portion of the bill. So they split out the percentage by usage, and then that's how they charge out the bill. So if we have one percent usage, then our part portion of the bill's one percent. And Comer Manor's ten percent, and Bladensburg's fifty percent. Bladensburg has the biggest usage, because of the biggest town.
And we gotta really start promoting the bus, because a lot of residents don't know about it.
Yeah, cause I mean, we initially was for the seniors, so I don't think any of them even-
We, we sent out, um-
Especially with the apartments and Franklin Apartments. Um, I mean, yeah, your, your apartment, Callan Franklin Apartments.
We sent out postcards, we sent out, um, flyers, we put it on eBlast, we put it on the website, we put it in newsletter, and so-
And then it has to be our word of mouth.
Yeah, I think it's mostly, you guys have to promote it.
Same, Mr. Johnson over there with your apartments, probably is a benefit, is a need for it.
What, the bus?
Yeah. No, no seniors over there?
The people, uh, no, not over there, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think if we're gonna be, if we're gonna be charged for it anyway, then we should probably-
Yeah, be ready to promote it.
Do something like a senior trip once a month or something like that. I mean, we're gonna, we have to pay for the usage of it anyway. I know, um, I don't know Comer, I know Cottage City does like senior trips, you know, once a month or whatever they, whatever they do. Um, where they take seniors, like, I think they went to Ocean City once, and then they went, um, into DC down into Haynes Point or wherever. Uh, but they do like once a month, a senior trip. So may, that might be something we wanna think about, if we have to pay for it anyway. Maybe our seniors, maybe that's something they might wanna do, you know, if they, if they know that there's a senior trip.
Like the next senior luncheon, raise it, as a, and see if people are interested, and then-
Going out.
Well, over there where I live at, it's not that many seniors, and the folks that are over there, they only wanna be bothered.
Really?
They, them people, they just wanna, they just, they go to work, they come home. Go to work, come home, they only wanna be bothered. Because there's been plenty of times I went out my way to let people over there know if something was happening, or. I used, I used to hang posters, but Stephanie, uh, she stopped me from doing that, you know, so. There's no connection with the town and the rest of the people over at the park, because of the resident manager. Cause I used to go to every building. Something's happened, I've attacked something, on the board that you're supposed to put something, you know, hang something, but she put a stop to it, after I've been doing it for three years.
So I mean, I mean, it's, it's worth exploring, cause I think we can do a senior luncheon. You know, you could say something, like, you know, maybe you wanna go to the ballroom or wax museum, something like that, you know.
The space between Fountain Park and Elizabeth Land.
Till you do it, I guess.
It needs to be addressed, cause that's, that's too much trash, then, you know, that's so much responsibility, like, clean it up.
Between the residents.
Nobody's responsible, huh? So who's parking?
It's open space.
It's just an open space.
Well, who's ever cleaned it?
Huh?
Who's ever cleaned it?
I'm not the same.
Nobody owns it.
Somebody, you know, you know, between- Has to be between, because it's Fountain Park, this right here, oh, this is Elizabeth Land.
Mm-hmm, but don't, nobody takes care of it.
Well, it needs to be addressed. Don't y'all have a, um, what, what, the housing association? And then y'all have, do have landscapers that come through there.
That's not, um, that would have to be sort of like a, um-
Volunteer pickup or cleanup.
Yeah.
Well, I would think somebody own that property, and it needs to be addressed.
Am I mistaken?
Okay. Are you talking about when you put the flyer and then it comes down?
Yeah, you're talking about trash on Elizabeth's Landing's, uh, property.
Oh, okay, okay.
The one that is, uh, backed by the, um-
Along Kennelworth.
Yeah, it's like a little, little strip of woods.
Spot where-
A lot of trash.
Between Fountain Park and Elizabeth Land.
I thought somebody was cleaning that up, nobody cleans that up.
Somebody used to clean it up.
It's a, it's a open area.
The guys from Jessup, when they used to come through.
Yeah, it's like a open, un, I don't even know if that's really, that, oh, Kennelworth Avenue portion? That's not Elizabeth Landy. I thought you were talking about this portion right here.
Not, no, not back, not in the back, not front.
That, I don't know.
Well, it's a whole strip that's from Kennelworth Avenue down to the park. So does, does Maryland National Park, the plan is on it?
Yeah, that part I don't know. I thought you were talking about this back here, that's ours.
So you don't own Clearover to Fountain Park?
No, not in the front.
Okay, so we can find out.
Yeah, I don't own that part.
Yeah, well, yeah.
The part that was taken by State Highway?
No, no, that's right of way.
No, I'm saying, the part that was taken by State Highway, yes. But are you talking about-
Other than about the woods, you know the woods.
Back there? No, I don't think so. I don't think so.
So that's no man's land.
I actually have a map of Elizabeth's Landing in my drawer. I'll pull it out afterwards.
Maybe that's the reason why it's become a dumping ground, cause nobody wants to-
Yeah, cause nobody, yeah, nobody's made, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, anything that's not fenced in and, and on a, um, public walkway is gonna be a dumping ground anyway. I mean, back here is even a dumping ground.
Well, well, in the front part on Kennelworth Avenue, if it was maintained, like, cut back trim, I think it'll be less of a dump.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's why people dump, because of the way, the way they let it, um, grow up.
Mm-hmm. If it was ours, we'd cut it.
I got the area, so we can take a, do some research on it.
Cause we cut the counties, cause what we've been maintaining is the counties.
Yeah.
And we cut that, yeah.
It's state.
Yeah, it's state.
Yeah.
I just have one more question. What, what, so what do we do for a hundred mile day?
It's a mile day, we never ended up with any-
Nobody did anything?
No one participated.
Oh, I just, I just didn't, nothing ever, nobody ever said anything, so I didn't know if we, just, we didn't do anything, okay.
Yeah, it was put out, but nobody turned any things in, I think we got one.
Yeah, I wrote one. For my neighbor, so then-
We can recognize.
She should get the, she's the only one with a knee, right? Like-
Yeah.
Ms. Sarah, did you have anything?
Um, yeah, before we, before the holidays, um, I went to the Port Towns Community Development Corporation meeting, and, um, was added to the board. So I look forward to seeing what this all entails, and I will report back dutifully to the council, um, about that. But there was a presenter that I thought was, might be of interest to our residents and, um, to the council, the mayor, but you were there, so you saw this, but, uh, there was a professor from the University of Maryland who did a presentation on environmental justice and environmental racism. And he was describing, you know, what this, what this term means, and basically it's lack of access to healthy food options, and sort of a disproportionate exposure or excessive exposure to pollutants in communities of color, um, or other sort of marginalized communities, because of the way decisions are made about, you know, where various, um, manufacturing or factories or whatever are going to be located, um, or lack of attention by the government to communities that are exposed to these, um, to these pollutants. So he also described, um, a little bit about this concept of, um, food deserts. Have you all heard of this issue? So-
Food deserts?
Food deserts, meaning that there is, um, that people don't have access to healthy food options that, in, in their local community. And instead, there's, um, you know, so a lot of commu-, like, some communities east of the river suffer from this in, in DC, where there's like no legitimate grocery store in Anacostia, right? Um, and the kind of opposite of that, which is also a problem, is this idea of a food swamp, where there's plenty of food options, but none of them are good, right? Like, so there's a glut of, um, like, fast food restaurants or something like that. And so, so what he was suggesting was that we, as the port towns, think about how we might be able to engender, um, new business. And I know this is something you've talked about, Selita, is wanting to get retail here in Edmiston, and I completely agree with that. Um, and it's also thinking about the right kind of retail, right? So maybe if we could get some small grocery store kind of healthy food option, you know, not a gas station or a Seven-Eleven or something that is not going to be really great for our residents for a variety of reasons. Um, and so it's just something to think about. Um, but the, I connected with a professor afterward, and he is also, um, involved with the League of Conservation Voters, which has a, um, arm of the group that is sort of dedicated to outreach to the Spanish-speaking and Hispanic community, um, to really kind of galvanize that community around these concerns. And I was thinking, given that fifty percent of our population is Spanish-speaking, and that we don't have a great deal of involvement from that community, um, in Edmiston, that this might be a good way, like, a good foray, foray into trying to, to get more involvement from that community. So I am trying to set up a call with that group to see, and, you know, and they're all Spanish-speaking, and, um, and I think that that would be a good sort of messenger to our Spanish-speaking community, because it's, you know, maybe folks that they would be more comfortable with, um, but who can also sort of share the green team message and hear from those community members about these kinds of issues, so.
The food desert program, the five-year, actually seven-year program that we were under with the Kaiser Permanente grant for a million dollars, that was their whole focus, uh, for the port towns. And so, um, the Health Partnership studied, surveyed, uh, we are a part of a food desert, um, and so, um, they never did come up with great solutions necessarily.
Yeah.
But, um, there's a lot of data and a lot of information that they spent over that seven years.
Was there a report?
There was.
Issues or something like that? Could you share that with?
Yeah.
With all of us.
I think it was, it was shared with you all, but, uh, before, but I'll get it again. The mayor's meeting, I think, was Celeste, uh, later this month.
Cause that's kinda what Kim did, right?
Yes, it was exactly what Kim did.
Right, and, and they, um, the-
And the, the farmer's market that we have.
That's why, that's why the farmer's market developed was, because it was about healthy food choices.
That's why Bladensburg's farm is there.
Right.
Because they're in a food desert because the swamp, that's where the apartment community over there. Because the fast food store that's there, it's not a fast food store. It's a convenience store. It's a store that has, doesn't have, yeah, Autumn Woods, right. It doesn't have the prices on the groceries. It has a can of soup, no price. So when you go to the counter in Autumn Woods.
Um, Autumn Woods up there is your turn to go to.
When you go to the counter.
Elizabeth City.
They tell you there how much that can of soup is. So it's ridiculously priced.
Right.
And that's where, we did a survey there. Kim actually did that survey there.
The Food Equity Council.
Yeah, they always doing it.
The Prince George's County Food Equity Council developed as a result of that and worked on, on those kinds of policies, changes in Prince George's County so that not only prices were displayed, there was fresh produce available in those kinds of stores. Um, so that people could, could get bananas or get green vegetables.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there was, like I said, it was seven years. We were, the grant just ended last year. And so the final report was done like last, about a year ago.
Okay. I mean, that predates my time with the council, so I'd love to see that and maybe it'd be good to research that.
And also the farmer's market, cause last year it really was, it really was.
I don't think that.
A disaster last year. Yeah, we really gotta really revamp that and really encourage people because, yes, that's true. You go to most impoverished neighborhoods, you can find a liquor store, you can find a fast food, but you can't really find good, healthy eating. And that's the reason why we have those farmer's markets. And, but if there's nothing there, people are not gonna come. They might come one time and not come back again.
I'll check with Margaret, but I don't think she's doing it this summer.
I think they did better when it was up Bladensburg.
Our farmer's market wasn't on, in a good location.
Yeah, we really didn't really think about it because I, there is a need. There was definitely a need for, because look at the one in Riverdale. And the river, one in Riverdale, they expanded, they're doing all in the winter. They didn't, they didn't stop because it was so, so we gotta find a way to.
Their success was based on the availability of WIC and EBT person onsite. If they had a WIC, EBT person available every week, they had high volume.
Are, are you talking about the one?
Here.
Up here, okay.
Yes, the, the farmer that they had, the one farmer besides Eco City, would sell out and he was happy. But they couldn't have a WIC, a WIC or EBT person there all the time. So many times.
Yeah, but still, but even though I don't use WIC or EBT, but I would go there if there's a reason to go there. And I remember I went and I was like, okay, there wasn't much. So we really, like I know for Riverdale, they've got the food trucks. They've really expanded them. So maybe we need to, to give them a reason. Cause now, it's not just about people coming, you know, for free, you know, with EBT or whatever. There are other people who will consume the products.
Margaret paid, paid vendors to come for a while. She, she set up events. She had a DJ. She did, you know, I mean, she did all the things that you would think would try, try to. She put up those, I don't know if you noticed, but she had flags all up and down Kennelworth. She put up signs all over the communities and they just, it, it was like a roller coaster. And for them to justify continuing to have that Saturday devoted to that, because they were one of the main vendors. And they had a food vendor, a pupusa lady that was always there.
She was good.
And she was. And then they had the farmer from Virginia and that was, that was where they kinda got stuck. So I haven't talked to Margaret yet and if you recall, you guys contributed fifteen or a thousand dollars last year to the EBT WIC program. It doubled their dollar. So they got double value for what they could buy and so.
Yeah, cause if she had more, if literally if she had more farmers like the one she had. Oh my God, cause I would come, I would come because he had like the best peaches I think I'd ever seen in my life and I would come. Of course, by the time I get there, it'd be all gone. But.
But you're right. They had wonderful produce.
Oh, the produce was just exceptional. If she could find two, three, four people like that, people would flock there. They, they would, so.
See what she's thinking, but I, I'm not, don't you think she wasn't planning to continue?
Could you reach out to somebody that runs the Riverdale programs, get some ideas or maybe we can piggyback or?
Well, I mean, obviously Margaret is a key player there.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, and she's right on the street.
That's how she modeled her program, so.
Yeah, I mean, Riverdale's got a couple access points, right, that, just being right there at the train station and not Riverdale markets, like, so.
Got those new.
So we got three brothers. We gotta work with them. We really gotta think about it. Cause we really, we really gonna really do something. We really gotta get hands on.
We even did a postcard. You got a free gift on the first Saturday at the market and no one turned in one. Went out to every resident of the town. They did free eggs. They did free eggs.
Yeah, it's gotta be a way.
And maybe there's other options we can think about too, right? Like on Rhode Island Avenue. As you, like if you were coming from Mount Rainier and you cross Eastern Avenue going into DC, there's this food shop, this like small market that actually. No, 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 not in, not in Mount, it's in DC. It's on Rhode Island Avenue.
Like right across the line.
Yeah, and I think it's a little, I think it's a co-op actually of some kind. And it's funny because they sell a lot of products from Costco, right? Cause there's a lot of Kirkland bread things. But, but, but they've got fresh produce, they've got bread, they've got, and it's all reasonable prices because, and I think it's meant to, because that's total food void right there.
It also has to be reasonably priced because we all don't like, like for PSA, we all don't have WIC and that type of things. We, we also have to be able to afford it. So it has to be reasonably priced. Cause I, there's a lot of, like the markets in the district and they're, they're pretty, pretty steep. Some of them can be. And I know there's one, what is that, on 202 Kaiser? Kaiser has a market every, I don't know if it's once a week or however they do it. And the, the vegetables are, they're beautiful, but it's a little pricey, but a lot of people come, but they're right there with Kaiser. They're right there in that parking lot.
Yeah.
And so they, they have a lot of business because they have a lot of Kaiser employees and people come to Kaiser, you know, a lot. So they, they do a wonderful business, but, and they have more than one or two vendors. It's a lot of them there. So, you know, even if maybe we try something like that and maybe have it somewhere near in Edmiston.
Well, I mean, the market was in Edmiston.
You know, or if we could try and attract, cause the one thing I've been thinking about right there on Kennelworth Avenue is a Subway sub shop. Even though it's, it's fast food, it's healthy food. And I know, I've got kids and they love, they love, you know, that's how they get their, their, you know, their vegetables, you know, cause they love their sandwiches with a whole bunch of vegetables. We, we could start recruiting healthier businesses to the town too, to also promote the healthy eating, healthy living, so.
It's a process. Well, I didn't mean to get us sidetracked too much, but.
It's a good, it's a good conversation. No, it's, it's a good conversation.
And I'm happy to invite Margaret because she's got the history to a work session and she can talk to you about.
That would be great.
The experience as she first had the location up at Elizabeth Seaton Rogers Heights, Port Towns Elementary. Then she moved it down two years down here and she worked with Mario at Three Brothers and did all of the promotions and ideas that he had and they chose the time and, and they, they shortened the time last year.
But the Rod, the one at Rogers Heist didn't do, didn't do well? Cause I thought it was on the.
Ah, yeah, I thought it did better.
The reason it did better was she paid the vendors the first year it was there. And she paid vendors to be there through a grant. She lost the grant. So she couldn't pay vendors the next year and so none of them came because they didn't do large volume, but they got paid by, by her. Um, and so then she thought by moving would help the, cause what more visibility could you have than the cars zooming past on Kennelworth? And, and plus Mario's lunch crowd on a Saturday and.
And one last thing, cause I know we've been going on for a while. Maybe we can piggyback with La Fondiva. She's got, when she did the Independence Day, I was impressed how many vendors she was able to get. She might be a good resource for us to maybe get her involved. Cause I know she's a businesswoman. She's all about.
Yeah, three of those, yeah, three of the vendors were hers, yeah.
Maybe we could just.
Well, my two cents is she should have had the signs that said farmer's market. What did it say?
Yeah, that makes sense too.
What did it say?
Mercata.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. At least do it in both languages. Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And she wouldn't budge for that.
Very good point, yeah. Really, she wouldn't, she wouldn't budge? Oh, really?
My hair pointed out to her numerous times.
Really? Yeah.
Would not budge from that, so. That would have helped, I think. All righty, so all we need is a motion to close this session, go into a closed session and not return back out into an open session.
I make a motion to close this session, go into open session and go into closed session and not come back into session.
To discuss personal matters.
To discuss personal matters.
Second. On my favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for attending.
Thank you for coming.
Good seeing everyone. And happy new year.
Have a wonderful evening.
Uh, no, come back Monday.
Absolutely.